Good evening. What are you guys all doing here tonight? The City Council Committee on Public Health, Safety and Environment co-posted with the Committee of the Whole, met in City Council Chamber on Tuesday, April 23rd at 6:00 PM. For the purpose of discussing matters listed below, notice of this meeting was posted on April 16th at 8:33 AM. This meeting is being recorded, and people can follow us online and on SATV. Present are Councillors Morcillo, Jurzlo, Proznuski, and myself from the committee. Absent is Councillor Watson felt, and from the Committee of the Whole, we have Councillors Merkel, Harvey Davis, Hathworth, Stott, and Varela. In honor and acknowledgement of the life of Andy Carbone, 59 of Salem, I'm going to read a poem called "Dead Homeless Man" by Guy Jadakinski. "I looked at the face of a society death when I found the homeless man dead with nothing left. My heart burst, for sad it seemed, to find a man who died alone in his dream. Lying on the hard, brittle frozen ground, frost covered him all around. I reached down with hopes that I was wrong, to feel for a pulse beating strong. A tear fell down my face, for now I feel the disgrace. His skin was cold blue, stiff and lifeless. Learning that life wasn't so priceless, is society to blame? I do not know. Was his life to him a shame? I do not know. I wondered, did anyone remember him at all? Wasn't there someone to catch his fall? We forget about people every day. Is this the price some of us will pay? I pondered alone for quite some time, and wondered if this fate would be mine." If you'll indulge me, we'll have a moment of silence for Andy Carbone. Also in attendance, we have, from city staff, we have the solicitors, James Wheelock, Beth Renaud, we have health agent David Greenbaum, we have building commissioner Vula Afanos, we have fire chief Alan Dion, we have police chief Lucas Miller, police captain John Burke, and CIU unit sergeant Sean Andrus. So first, I'm going to lay out how the meeting's going to go. We're going to have a brief presentation, and then the council will deliberate on the proposed language revisions. And I want to thank very much city solicitors. We spent a lot of time on this, and actually, Councillor Davis, for a lot of suggestions that were made. Then we'll have public testimony, and although I'll remind people again, if you wish to state your name and address, go ahead. Those who haven't already testified will go first, and we'll leave that as an honor system. They'll go first. Everyone will get two minutes. And please note that public comments, just like, are not a discussion or dialogue, so we won't respond to them, just like the councillors won't, you know, address people in the public. And all public comments and all discussion from the council will be directed to me, the Chair. And then we'll bring it back to the council for final motions. Okay? So we're going to start with Life Bridge President Jason Etheridge.
Councillors, thank you for the invite tonight. As I, my name is Jason Etheridge, President of Life Bridge North Shore. As I indicated in the last meeting, we are experiencing unprecedented demand for services across our programs at Life Bridge North Shore. As you may know, this is not unique to Life Bridge or Salem, but is now the norm across the Commonwealth and unfortunately, the whole country. Since beginning tracking in 2007, HUD reports that 64% of volumes of care, so the federal representations of the different communities, reported increases in unsheltered homelessness, just homelessness. This effect is not isolated to cities. More than half of rural and suburban communities saw their numbers increase as well. The increase in unsheltered homelessness is largely driven by two groups, mostly among individuals. So we are seeing the same thing here, including chronically homeless, which has been up 18%. Again, the largest increase we've seen since these numbers have been tracked. The point being is, what we're looking at is a culmination of years of poor policy that have failed to address the root causes of homelessness. And this is not just our local community, I want to stress that. You know, these are things that a lot of communities are dealing with. Two weeks ago, for the first time in my time here at Life Bridge, and I've been here for 11 years, we saw more than 100 people on one night seek shelter. And that was over on Margin Street. We were able to accommodate everyone at that moment, but I want to be clear, many of those folks above our 50 were folks who were at the time living in the encampment. So we were able to keep everyone at Life Bridge. It was at that moment that we realized we had to open our transition center fairly quickly, and through a lot of hard work with staff, city, we're very grateful, we were able to open our transition site over on Canal Street with an additional 50 beds. Since then, and even before then, our outreach team has spent countless hours working with our unsheltered neighbors. And the first week we launched the facility over on Canal Street, we had an upwards of 50 individuals, and almost everyone from the encampment has stayed inside that facility at least once. I think there's a few numbers of people that haven't, but most of them. There has and continues to be a tremendous amount of support and gratitude from the folks staying with us. There's a one gentleman who brings seven pizzas every night, and comes in, and, you know, I wanted to just give a few facts of things we're seeing. On one night, we had three dogs. In my 11 years of being at Life Bridge, we've never had one dog. So to see three in one night was pretty amazing, that people were comfortable enough to come in. Several couples, which tends to be a barrier to service, we were able to provide services for them. And a lot more disturbing, many young, unattached, unsheltered women, two of which have since been hospitalized and undergoing some type of treatment as a result of their interaction at the site on Canal Street. You know, it is our mission to continue to offer these services and any others that might be needed during what I would describe as a crisis. And while this particular ordinance does not and could not solve many of the complex issues that got us to where we are today, Life Bridge firmly believes it's a step in the right direction for this community. So thank you.
Thank you, Jason. So now, we'll go to the city solicitor, who's going to walk us through the proposed revisions. On everyone's desk is with the red, and then, you know, we'll take each one of those individually, and then we'll open it up to the council for questions of city staff, or Jason.
So, the changes that are shown in red on your document are, as a result of a communication that we received from Councillor Davis, myself and Councillor Cohen, and James Wheelock, our assistant solicitor, went over and incorporated some of those changes, and I'll just run through them quickly for you. Under the definitions, we added a sentence to the city storage program policy that basically states that this policy shall take into consideration equitable access to stored eligible property, reasonableness of communication with persons whose eligible property is stored, transportation to access stored eligible property, and any other policies or criteria that ensure the safety and access of eligible property by their owner for a reasonable period of time. Moving on to the second page, there are two new definitions. One is defining reasonable transit access, which means a shelter that's within a half a mile from the commuter rail, from the subway, from a ferry terminal, from a bus stop, that a person in a shelter may reasonably access this transit to return to Salem without relying on an automobile. The next definition is supportive services, which means any program or service offered by a qualified licensed or registered nonprofit, providing housing, employment, financial, academic, or other similar services and entities that provide medical, mental health, recovery treatment, or other similar services.
Beth, why don't we stop there? If that's okay, and we'll see if anyone from the council has questions or comments about those. Councillor Jurzlo.
Thank you, Chairman. I make a motion that we...
Let's see if anyone has any comments or questions for the solicitor. Okay, seeing none. Councillor Jurzlo.
Thank you, Chair. I move that we adopt this new language.
Do we have a second?
Are we going to be going piece by piece? Motions on each change? I second that motion.
Any discussion? Seeing none. Councillor Jurzlo. Oh. I'm sorry. Thank you, Councillor Morcillo. All those in favor? Okay. That passes four to nothing. Thank you. City Solicitor.
Okay. Out of the purpose section, we added a new phrase at the end of Romanet 1, which says, sort of, let me just back up a little bit. We had struck a bit of the language, and this replaces that language. So, the purpose is to offer an available shelter and available unit to persons experiencing homelessness in Salem, who live in campsites, and to better provide persons experiencing homelessness, yes, with live-in campsites, with housing space and emergency shelter space, and provide reasonable transit access, and to connect people to supportive services so that they so choose to receive. Those were, that's where those two definitions come in.
I'm going to read what you replaced. And that is curtailing the existence of campsites that shield drug trafficking, human trafficking, weapons, fire hazards, violence, and other criminal activity, and that create eight conditions for large crowds to congregate.
So that's in the, in the next section. We replaced the words that you just read, the phrase, "which may create public health concerns." So thank you, that's the second change. On the next page, under D, Romanet 2, we added a sentence at the end of that, which says, "The list shall be posted on the city's website," this is a list of available beds, "and at any Salem-based shelter shall include the date of the posting and any site regulation that may present an obstacle for admittance."
I'm just going to mention one thing, Beth, and that is number two, where it says, "which may create public health concerns." Unfortunately, the red mark still includes the part that we wanted to omit.
It's a, well, on the version that I have, it's a strike through.
Oh, it is good?
Yeah.
You got that on your, okay.
So, once these are accepted, I'll just accept the change, and then it'll remove that.
Okay. Since the police, the piece that you just mentioned was something that came up at the meeting, does anyone have questions about that, or concerns? About the posting?
The next section is F, offer of shelter. And on Romanet 1, we added a phrase at the end, which says, "which may be public trans-" Let me read the whole sentence. "The city shall furnish or cause to be furnished said transportation, which may be public transportation. Before making a referral, the city shall ensure space is available for a reasonable period of time." We added a new section, and I'll read that out for you. "If an individual is employed in Salem or a neighbor in community, the city shall, to the best of its ability, offer shelter space within the community in which they are employed, and shall not use the existence of shelter space in other communities as a means to displace them from an encampment. The city shall also consider the work schedule of the individual, and refrain from offering shelter space with curfews, check-in schedules, and any other policy restriction that may interfere with the individual's ability to maintain their employment." That is the last of the changes, Councillor.
Okay, so before we discuss other things, for all the things after the purpose, do any councillors have any comments or questions? I'm going to do Councillor Stott, and then Councillor Harvey.
Thank you, Chair Cohen. I just had one question about the postings. It was brought up during public comment about access to the internet, basically, to find the website of available shelter space. So I do see that it's also going to be posted in shelter space. Was public locations, I mean, I don't, we don't really have public posting boards downtown anymore, or anything like that, but was any other additional printed sharing of this list discussed at all?
No, but we do have some availability of space at City Hall downstairs. That's something official.
When we were talking about, I'll just off of mine, we were talking about this, we were trying to think of where people who are curious about this, whether they are working with unhoused people or unhoused themselves, where they would go. And, you know, part of the ordinance does say that if it's implemented, that we do have to provide notice to people in person, you know, in like a waterproof contain, you know, laminate or something. And this was the best we could come up with, unless you could think of something else. While you're pausing, can I, yeah, Councillor Harvey?
My question is, in paragraph F, when it says, "The city shall ensure spaces available," when it says the city, it's kind of like, what department in the city is going to actually be handling that aspect of the wording that's in making sure that space is available? Is it the police department, the fire department, the health department? Whose responsibility is that going to end up being, or how does, I just think it's kind of vague, just saying the city's responsible, but, you know, is there any direction as to who's going to be responsible for that?
I'm going to defer to Jason, if you don't mind coming up, because I think in securing the transition center that we did, it was pretty much all the, do you want to come up? It was pretty much a combination of everyone you mentioned, but I'm going to let Jason speak to that.
I understand the question, it's just a matter of operation, right? Where if someone has to own this...
Correct.
Yeah. Traditionally, it's been in collaboration with the Community Impact Unit, not to put these on the spot, but I suspect it's going to be more than just one department, you know, in terms of getting the information out there as to what's available. I think a lot of it will come from us, we'll disseminate it to the appropriate city departments, probably the CIU. I imagine, we could probably do a list of all of the departments, so they have it available. We will manage it as well in our run, since people will be coming to us for those beds. So I don't know, I can't answer who in the city will actually own it. It has been a collaboration to this point. It's been a lot of departments.
Okay, thank you. And I, now, the second half to that question would be, is there something that we're going to keep track of, as far as how often people are being placed, or the services are being rendered in that sense?
Police Chief Lucas Miller.
Thank you. The exact, to come back to your previous question, as Jason said, the exact mechanism hasn't been established, but that has typically been coordination between the two, so, between my CIU unit and Life Bridge, because right now, they're the only game in town. But it's more of an IT matter, to figure out who's going to actually be posting, and we don't, we haven't figured that out yet, but, but I think the baseline is it would fall to the police department. In terms of the second question, you know, the, the updating of, the mechanics of updating it would also probably fall to the police department. Again, we're prepared to shoulder that, mostly because we would be the ones presumably to have first contact with people, people in need of services.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Morcillo.
Thank you, Chair. My question is on the last, the last edit, where it talks about considering the work schedule of the unhoused individual. What is the likelihood, given the shelter spaces that we know in this, in this area that we're discussing, that they have that kind of flexibility at the shelters? Jason, if you could answer that?
I can't speak to, we operate two shelters, River House and Beverly, Life Bridge in Salem. We do accommodate work schedules. There's probably, at any given moment, an upwards of half of the people staying with us do work. Many of those folks do take overnight jobs, you know, some people have two jobs. I can tell you that, in our case, if you're thinking of the auxiliary site, there's really no curfew there anyway. So I don't see that being an issue. If someone comes at 2:00 in the morning, and there's a space, they get the space. As far as Life Bridge or River House, we do accommodate such things. So flexibility for us is normal. Outside of that, I'm trying to think, you know, I think most shelters should have an answer for that question. It sounds like we'll have to do a little bit of work, if we're, if we're promising or assuming policy and operations of other shelters, we will need that information. I don't think anyone here knows of that, as soon as we speak to them.
Also, any other comments about the edits that we just reviewed? Councillor Proznuski?
I make a motion that we accept the edits as proposed by our city solicitor.
Second.
Second by Councillor Morcillo. Let me see if I can get this right. All in favor? Before we open it up to public comment, any councillors want to weigh in or comment, or have questions about other parts of the ordinance? Councillor Davis.
Thank you, Chair Cohen. I appreciate some of my amendments, or the language in them being used here. I just wanted to quickly, if we can, go over some of the things that weren't included, and have a little bit of discussion about some of those things. When it comes to the storage, one thing I was really hoping to see change in this ordinance is a little bit more thought going into that, exactly what that looks like, more specificity, and hopefully, some input from not just the police on that. As far as I can tell, this is, as this is written, this is something that the police are coming up with, making changes to. What I offered here is that there be additional, I kind of threw out the idea of a policy advisory and oversight committee for this, just because it's a really sensitive issue, dealing with, you know, other people's belongings. I'd like to see a lot of care go into that, so, thinking about, what is the language I put here? The veteran service officer, someone from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board, someone from the Board of Health, Commissions on Disabilities, Council on Aging Board, Race Equity Commission. I think that that would be very helpful in dealing with a very sensitive issue here. I don't, in my mind, I don't know if this is a role for law enforcement. Just wondering if there...
Would you be okay, Councillor Davis, if I invited Chief Miller up to talk about this, and, and how they came up with this, and how perhaps it was implemented in Boston? Just for some context.
So, the, as previously discussed, we did try to follow the Boston model. We felt that that had been the most successful of the models that we looked at. And in that case, at the site, there were, it was not just law enforcement who took, who took in property, but it was ultimately law enforcement who had the responsibility of safeguarding it. And I think that's probably, again, a sort of a practical matter, that is something we do through the course of police work, so we already have some of that apparatus in place, unlike those other departments. But it's certainly, I mean, to be perfectly candid, it's, it's going to be something of a burden, so it's not something I, you know, demand to own. And I would welcome, welcome the assistance of other agencies, or, or other suggestions.
Yeah, I guess to follow up on that, yeah, in thinking through, you know, the actual, physically dealing with people's belongings, I imagine that the police would be heavily involved in that. But in, when it comes to the actual policy writing, that's where I felt like insight from other parties, right? I'm thinking about social workers and people that have different areas of expertise, adding insight into that, right? Law enforcement is not policymakers, they're, they're law enforcement, right? So I think it's, I think it's specifically at that stage where I think, I think something like this would be helpful. I guess that's not a question, I'm sorry.
Did you have other comments you wanted to make, Councillor Davis?
Not on that specifically, but on other items. Another edit that I offered was talking about a term that I called reasonable stay. So one of, one of my main concerns when it comes to this ordinance is setting someone up for failure when it comes to find, offering a shelter that might only be available for a very limited amount of time, right? A day, a week, a month, and now they're, you know, their campsite has been removed, they're gone, they're not necessarily welcome to come back and set up an encampment again. So what happens there, right? We heard from Jason from Life Bridge at the last meeting, say that that's, that wouldn't be the case at, at Life Bridge specifically. But in this 15-mile radius we're talking about, there, there could be shelters that can't guarantee us that someone's going to be allowed to be somewhere for a reasonable enough amount of time, that this is actually going to be something that helps them, rather than throwing them into kind of more disarray, and shelters' policies could change, right? So that's something that would, would be concerning to me as well. Do, yeah, just having some language in here that would, would say, the shelter that's being offered, some period of time, bare minimum, that we know that they're going to be able to be there before they're made to leave the encampment.
So I'm going to try to speak for myself and the solicitors when we were evaluating your, your edits, your, your proposed edits. On this one, it's, as you can imagine, it's very difficult to have a range of things when we can't define it. The goal for the city staff, Life Bridge, and I think most of the people here, is that any transition center that we have is one within Salem boundary, if possible, and that, as, as Jason said at the last one, that if it's possible... And that, as, as Jason said at the last one, that if, if it's possible the way the transition center is now, come as you are, stay as long as you want. You know, reasonable rules that may not apply to other facilities or shelters or agencies based on their funding, which may define things. And so the reason we didn't incorporate that into the language is because in the event that we can't find a place temporarily in Salem, we are really at the, at the mercy of another facility if we decide to, you know, to secure that for how long they would be able to do it. Our hope is that we'll always have a transition center in Salem that will not have a time limit for people. Just giving you what we were talking about when we were evaluating the language.
Yeah, that makes sense. I appreciate that policy and I think that, that Life Bridge has, and hope that most others do. Again, my concern is, I apologize, I lost my train of thought a little bit there. If, if someone has the ability to stay in a shelter for, for two days, great. And they want to go there, sure. But again, if we're using, if, if that means that we're now in a period where shelter is available and someone is now made to leave the encampment, that's the part I'm having a problem with, right? So I understand what you're saying in terms of that would make it easier for us to place people if they'd like to be placed, but then, then there's this other piece to it, right? Of, okay, now you've got to leave the encampment.
Can I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna interject. So before Jason says this thing, the, the concept wasn't the ease of placing people. It was finding a place that is safe and, and appropriate.
Yeah, so, you know, the shelter system that's funded through the Commonwealth, we operate under a scope of service. So if you take state funding, as many of the shelters, not all within that radius that I saw, do take state funding and therefore adhere to a scope of service. That scope of service, which I'm very familiar with, does not time out people in shelter. So there are not shelters that I saw on the 15 mile radius list, for example, that would have a policy that says you're going to stay one, two, three, or six days. In theory, you're, as, you know, the new scope of service that just came out two years ago says residents can stay for as long as they need to. It's basically behavior based as opposed to putting a, you know, some arbitrary time limit upfront, 15, 20, 30 days. So what I guess I'm saying is if someone was fortunate enough to be placed in one of the shelters that I've seen on the list, would be their bed until, for example, they lose it or something, but, but as long as they would need it, under the state scope of service.
While I'm glad to hear that, what I worry about is making an ordinance for the, the policies that we're seeing at shelters today, when this ordinance could be in place for years. I don't think it would hurt us to have language in ordinance that would, would protect people from, from setting them up for something like that, despite the fact that today, as we're hearing, most shelters, that wouldn't be an issue. State policies can change. And that's my concern.
Thank you Counselor Davis. Counselor Marsillo.
Thank you Chair. Can I just ask Counselor Davis, do you want a definition for reasonable stay? Is that where you're getting to?
Yeah, some, some minimum amount of time, right? And I don't, I don't know what that would be. I mean, I, I don't know if I'm the most qualified to make that. But if I saw something that said, the shelter that's being used to justify taking someone out of an encampment can't only, it has to be, they have to be guaranteed that bed for six months, three months.
Any other counselors have questions, comments before we open it up to the public? Counselor Merkel.
Thank you Chair Cohen. Not being a member of the committee, I wanted, I was thinking about Counselor Davis's questions about the storage and hearing Chief Miller, but I was also thinking, I, I know that the Salem Police Department has social workers on staff. So I was wondering if, you know, they're, maybe they're already involved in the conversation. Just the guidance and just their input incorporated that might, you know, address some, some of those concerns about handling, handling storage. Thanks. Chief Miller.
Thank you. We do have social workers on staff or, or mental health clinicians. Both for the, for the purpose of, of getting services to mentally ill and, and for people experiencing substance use disorder. They're, they're, they're integrated with the department, so they would certainly be part of this. But it's very much, I mean, they are employees of the police department. I will also tell you as an aside, you know, I have funding to hire more than I can find right now. So that's a plug for anybody who wants to work for me.
Thank you. So yeah, that, their input and, and concerns can, can be incorporated as well in regards to the storage. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Marsillo.
Thank you Chair. I just want to drill down a little bit more on Counselor Davis's concern about reasonable stay. Jason, can you answer a few questions? Is there ever a situation that a shelter would displace someone living there because someone from their own community needed a place to stay? Have you ever seen any rules like that in any community shelters?
No, you know, if it's a state funded shelter, it is technically open to those in the Commonwealth. So it wouldn't, I think of the term preference, you know, there's no preference depending on where the shelter is.
Okay, I'm, I'm just thinking, and I, and I agree, like, I think that now that communities are writing ordinances like this, would that, so that wouldn't necessarily be a legal thing for them to do for another community to say, we're prioritizing people within our community.
I think so, not, not in the state shelter system as I understand it.
Okay. All right, so has the state ever had limits on stay in shelters?
No, up until recently, they left it up to the individual shelters to decide limits on stay. And that's why I talked a little bit about a new scope of service, new to us in terms of the last two years. There were times where you could limit just arbitrarily based on the number of nights you thought was appropriate. And I mean, the average was usually somewhere in the 30 to 60 day range. I think you would be familiar with the limiting of stays of families in shelters. That's currently being talked about in the Commonwealth. So there is language like that around. But it goes both ways, you know, you, you know, I could never guarantee someone could stay at Life Bridge for six months. Nor could I ever limit them to two days, right? There's, you can't, you can't guarantee a late stay either. So it's, it's both.
So what would, what would limit their stay?
People do have to leave shelter and it's behavioral based issues. And also when they're housed, they move along to somewhere better than that. Hopefully housed or reunited with family or onward somewhere else.
Okay, and currently you said that the state has said that there is no limit, there can't be a limit on how long you stay.
The limit, the amount of days someone stays in shelters is over.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Heppel.
Thank you Mr. Chair, through you. What, what guarantees someone a bed from one night to the next? Is there a certain time they have to be back? I'm just curious if, if a person were to, to come to Life Bridge today and were to come back each night, is there a, a point where they would no longer be able to come back throughout the day and then just over, over the period of time?
Not that I can think of.
Is there, is there a time they have to be back in the shelter to guarantee the bed?
And I'm only gonna, I'm, I'm not making a difference, I want to clarify. Are you speaking about our state funded shelter that operates on 56 Margin Street? Or the auxiliary site we're, we're running as well?
I think I'll go with just a state funded site for now.
We have a, you have to be back, I believe, somewhere around 8:00 is been the curfew. So that would be back in your bed at that point or into the facility at that point.
Okay, so if you're in the facility by 8:00 PM on any night, you could theoretically stay at Life Bridge for an undetermined amount of time. There's, there's no one who would say.
Right now is in excess of 120 days.
Okay, so if I had been there for two, two months, three months, four months, and hadn't caused any issues and just in by 8:00 PM every night, I could.
If you've been there over a year.
Okay.
The answer is yes.
Okay, thank you.
Before you sit down, could you make us aware of what the rules are currently at the transition center?
Currently, they are, you know, a, a, a set of rules that we worked on with input from the folks we are trying to, to work with, in particular, the unhoused, chronically homeless and those in the encampments. There is a, what we're calling a flexible curfew. It's really no identified time. We do let the group sort of pick a time when lights go out. You know, we do have to have some sleep time in that facility for a lot of different reasons. But there's no, you know, people can show up at any time they want to. That was, we've seen that as a barrier for service for this particular group, so we, we push that back. We do also allow pets, which is something that you wouldn't find in, in other sort of state funded shelters, although they guess could if they wanted to, but right now you, you're just required to be ADA compliant, so service animals. You know, we are not doing that at this current facility. It allows us not to have to. And then, you know, the taking in couples has always been a barrier to service. You know, it's really hard to find maybe a female and a male bed at the same time when you present yourself at shelter. So we've worked really hard to make sure we, we have the space to identify as a couple to take people in at the same time. As far as rules, you know, we allow people to come as they are. We, we work through, we really have a behavioral based model. People's baselines are different. People in shelters, you know, there's, there are several that are actively using. If they're okay and they're safe and our staff is safe and fellow guests are safe, that's okay. Right, so we do allow that in both sides of our facilities. So again, as far as rules, I, I want to, I want to be careful. There aren't many. We do not allow substance abuse onsite. You know, we will not run a facility where we, we allow people to use onsite. It's not a safe injection site, if that's the narrative that's out there. That does not mean people aren't using. It just means we will not allow it inside the facility. That's probably just about it.
Thank you Mr. Chair. I just want, Jason, I just want to thank you for coming back up again and again and again. And I, I think just, just, I think it illustrates the point that, that the concern, I think, is, is not the clearing of an encampment, it's the shelter space and what that looks like afterwards. And just, I think that my colleagues are really trying to understand what that, what that looks like and what that experience is. Because I think a lot of this ordinance hinges on, on what you all do and, and, and creating more shelter space and having acceptable shelter space. So just appreciate you and if we need a rolling chair to have you keep going, coming back up, I'd really appreciate it.
I need the exercise. No, thank for that Counselor of, this is, as I indicated before, there's no playbook for this type of response. And I think that's what I've been trying to highlight. There are a lot of communities trying to deal with this particular issue. So this is a good first step in that. And I think we will learn as we go. And we're nimble enough to adjust when needed.
Counselor Davis. Thank you Chair. I know we're trying to get to public comments. I, I just want to throw out the, the, the other items that I wanted to chat about really quickly. The notice to individuals, which reads during a period where shelter is unavailable when the city notifies an individual located in any campsite that a period when shelter is unavailable has ended, said individual shall have 48 hours to remove their camping materials. That feels much too short to me. I would love to see that extended. I offered up 72 business hours. Yeah, I, I can think of a lot of groups of people that, that, I mean, really to anyone, I think that that is much too short. When it comes to penalties, I think this is the section.
Do you want to do one at a time or?
Sure.
Do you want someone to address this or do you just want to list what your edits were that were not?
I know you wanted to get to public comments, so I was trying to, so run through them quickly, but.
So I'm, so why don't we do this? Why don't you detail the things that were not incorporated? I know you and I had a, a private conversation about it and some of the reasoning, I'm not saying that it was something that I expected you to accept, you know, after the solicitors I did it. But if you want to list the things that weren't incorporated, and, and then we'll go to public comments. Is that okay? Unless there's another Counselor or something.
So that was one of them. The penalty section, you know, it lists here, you know, sections of state law, right? GLC 40 S21 and a couple others. These allow for arrests and up to $300 fines. I, I think this is, I think this is the section that makes me most feel like this is not the solution here. This is going to take folks backwards. You know, if people are arrested and getting fined, that's going to make it a lot harder for them to get on their feet. And it does not work towards our goal of, of housing people. I had a whole waiver section. It looks like the, when it came to someone's employment, that was additional considerations were made in this. There were a lot of other groups of people that I think additional consideration should be made. I think one of the most important ones is victims of domestic violence or abuse. I personally toured three different domestic violence shelters and the amount of security precautions there were, were really impressive, right? You wouldn't get too far without a, a new locked door with a different code, the amount of security on the, on the computers that every staff member had to have, right? There's, these are very different types of shelters, right? And I'm, I'm concerned that this, a period of time when shelter is available is such a, a broad term. And we're not considering who it's available for and who it's suitable for. So, you know, I, I won't go through the long list of, of folks. I think special accommodations should be made for, but that, that one's a really important one, I think.
Thank you. Sure. Chief Miller.
I think it's worth noting, right, that, that, that we don't pretend that a $300 fine or an arrest is going to solve the problem here. Clearly, the vast majority of, of, of folks living in the encampment don't have $300. And I think it's also worth saying that I don't in any way pretend that arresting them is going to solve our problem, right? There is a public perception that when I arrest somebody, off they go to jail and, and, you know, they disappear from the scene. But the truth of the matter is if I were to arrest somebody for this ordinance, they might spend a little bit of time in my lockup before they were brought to court. But they, they would then go in front of a judge and the judge would say, this is a very, very minor crime, you're free to go. I'm not a judge, I can't guarantee that in every circumstance, but in every circumstance that I've experienced, that, that would be true. So then you've done them some harm and back they are out on the street. So on the one hand, I do believe that the arrest portion is necessary because it's a law. And absent an arrest or a fine, the only remedy for somebody breaking the law is to say, you know, don't do it or I'll tell you again not to do it. So it really becomes entirely toothless. But the arrest, the arrest portion is really something I very much hope to avoid. And, and at the risk of repeating myself, the singular, the single greatest success of the Boston program was that by the end, they didn't have to arrest anybody. So that really is, that, that is the model that I hope to emulate. And I think I, you know, there's a common refrain when I negotiate with my union, which is, well, you're a good chief, but we're worried about the next chief. I think if you look historically at the chiefs of the Salem Police Department, every one of them would be in agreement with me. You know, we, we, we have had some pretty compassionate chiefs and I expect to be followed by one, but no time soon.
Chief Miller. As you and your staff and I spoke prior to this meeting, I'm hoping that either you or Captain Burke can talk about what you would envision the process being if, if or when this ordinance is implemented. So for example, you know, it's, you know, effective May 14th or whatever it is. So, you know, we, we spoke about some of the scenarios. I'm not expecting you to go through all the ones that we discussed, but maybe you could talk generally, you and our Captain Burke about what we discussed. Is that right?
I, I think, I think again, looking at, looking at what happened in Boston and looking at our current relationship with folks in the encampment and folks in, in Salem Woods, for instance, we would, we would seek to find the placement as the, as the law requires. But it wouldn't be a, you're out now, right? And, and on the one hand, the law, the law does have that 48 hour window that you mentioned. But that 48 hours, we would not seek to say, all right, listen, you know, your stuff isn't gone 48 hours, you're under arrest. Or we're taking your stuff and we're tracking. You're under arrest," or "We're taking your stuff and we're tracking it." It might be, "We're taking your stuff and safeguarding it." But to be perfectly honest, the, so right now, a number of folks from the encampment have moved into the new Life Bridge facility, and they've left their belongings there. And their belongings are in a terrible, terrible state of disrepair. So, and disrepair is even the right word. There are ibodermic needles. There is human waste. So there are important belongings that absolutely need to be safeguarded. But I see this less, you know, I see this as a mechanism to save them from leaving their stuff there and it getting destroyed, rather than it safeguarded by the police department or by another capable entity.
I just want to say that I appreciate your mentality when it comes to these things. And at the last committee meeting, you said something, paraphrasing, you know, "We can't arrest our way out of this crisis," right? That's something I appreciate. But yeah, just reiterating, you know, we don't know who the next chief will be. You know, you're saying things like, "You don't plan on actually arresting people, giving people fines, actually implementing, you know, taking someone away after, you know, 48 hours." And yet, the language in this ordinance allows for all those types of things. So I'm concerned with the language of the ordinance, not with you.
Well, let me, let me give you a, an example or analogy. If you think about public demonstrations, right? You're not allowed to block the sidewalk. You're not allowed to block the street. You can be arrested for that. I'm not going to arrest you for that. And at this point, almost no modern police department would. Might we, if the circumstances really, really required it? Yes, and I think it's important that we retain the laws that prevent blocking the street and blocking the sidewalk. But, you know, compassion on the part of modern policing. I mean, we're always trying to improve our game, but at this point, I think that's the, those are our standard operating procedure.
Thank you. Counselor Presnisky.
I just want to back up a little bit of what Chief Miller is trying to say. It's tough for me to take off my counselor hat and put on my old police hat back on, but I want to go back to when the Community Impact Unit was founded back in the early 90s, and I worked under three chiefs. The goal of that is to keep people safe, to protect them. That's our job. We're not warriors, we're guardians. I'm sure you've probably heard that before, but that's taken pretty literally on the Salem Police Department. Criminalizing, well, there's already criminal acts being committed there every day. There's health code violations against mass law and city ordinance. There's building code violations against mass law. If this was the mantra of the police department, those people could have been arrested the first day. No, but we didn't. And the chief is right. You don't arrest your way, you don't find your way. That's not helping these people. Everybody realizes that. We want to help these people get back on their feet. Criminalizing people is absolutely, absolutely the last resort, because it just doesn't work. But sometimes you have to, you have to be resorted to that in order to just to try to help them out. Because maybe if we can't do something, maybe the courts can see through the forest or the trees and maybe get these people some court-mandated help. For people arguing about criminalization, it just irks me, because that is the furthest thing from the truth that the police department wants to do. That's all I have for now. Thank you.
Counselor Harvey, and then Counselor Merkel, and then hopefully, tonight, we'll get to public testimony.
Thank you. I'd like to reiterate what Counselor Presnisky and what Chief Miller were just talking about. I've gotten multiple emails telling me not to criminalize homelessness, and that's not what we're trying to do here. What we're trying to do is make it safe for people. But you do have to have some sort of rule or, you know, guidelines to go by. We can't just not put something like, you know, the arrest or the fine or whatever in there. And, you know, instead of looking at that as a criminalizing aspect, because homelessness isn't just drug addicts. It's not just alcoholics. It's, you know, mental health issues. And if Chief Miller's people find the need to arrest somebody, not necessarily because they're trying to criminalize them, but it's just like, I remember when I was a teenager, being PC'd because I was out drinking all night. And that's kind of the same idea as what they're doing. It gives them the opportunity for somebody maybe sober up or, you know, and then realize, you know what? Hey, maybe I do need help. And if that only works with one person, then it's worth it, because it's one life you probably just saved. So it's not a matter of arresting them and turning them into a criminal. It's trying to get them the help that they need. And if that's the last resort that the police department has to do, then I agree with it. I mean, if it saves one life, it's worth it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Cohen. Not being a member of the committee, to Counselor Davis's point and suggestion of maybe 40, 48 hours is a tight timeline, you know, for someone trying to, you know, make connections, establish other options, thinking about, you know, make such a big decision as a move. I was wondering your opinion on, Chief Miller, if the 72 hours would be, since you work with people, if that would be a more workable window of time to make it maybe less stressful and more manageable? Would welcome your thoughts on that suggestion.
Chief Miller.
I think, I think the 48 hours is a somewhat arbitrary length of time. I mean, we are, we are trying to be efficient. And to be clear, you know, the 48 hours is not, is not the amount of time that somebody has to move. That's the amount of times they have to remove their property. So that would, that would, it would be ample opportunity for us to safeguard their property during that time. But to answer your question more specifically, I don't, I don't have a tremendous objection to the 72 hours. Only the.
Thank you.
Counselor Jerzlo.
Thank you, Chair. I just had a few comments. This is a health crisis and an escalating humanitarian crisis. With this no camping ordinance, we aim to address these crises. Despite our differences, we need to seek a meaningful resolution. The homeless encampment across the cities are unsafe both for the at-risk occupants in the community. I've had numerous concerned residents and businesses owners reach out to me urging city officials to preserve the public spaces and protect the public's health and safety. Homeless people should be afforded a safe place where they can shelter, get food, shower, and have basic living necessities in a way that preserves their autonomy. And this ordinance addresses those issues. I applaud Mayor Pangalo, along with city officials in Life Bridge Shelter, in working together and obtaining a temporary shelter to get the homeless occupants off the street. As city councilors, we now need to do our part in voting in favor of this ordinance and send it to the council with a positive recommendation. Thank you.
I'm going to make a couple of statements, and then we are going to turn it over to public testimony. And this is very reflective of what discussions I've had in the community with Counselor Davis and my friends from, yeah, hi Skylar, and others. And it's twofold. You know, we're kind of in a situation where we're potentially starting an ordinance when we have a sympathetic, sensitive mayor and a police department that is willing to work with people in the community, you know, differently than other police departments in the state. And I feel very lucky personally for that and for the people who live in our community. And I'm also very proud that we have Life Bridge. I'm glad we have Life Bridge. We don't, there's not a lot of communities that have a Life Bridge or Harbor Light. And so, yeah, to Counselor Davis's point, yeah, we don't know what's in the future. But this is, you know, if this goes forward, you know, we revise ordinances all the time. And I want to make a statement to everyone here and in the public that, you know, we pass laws, and it's really incumbent, not only on us to monitor them, but there's a whole bunch of people in this room and people who, I've received over 300 emails, who are going to find us accountable, and we are going to react if we have to. And I'm not saying that this is the perfect situation. It's something that we're considering, and those are really two important points. I don't think we would be where we are today if we had a different set of city staff and Life Bridge involved in this, and the solicitors involved in this process. So if it's okay with everyone in the council, we're going to, yeah, open it up for public testimony. Oh, Counselor Presnisky.
I just, I just think people need to understand that no ordinance that's written is perfect. It's not black and white. It's always a work in progress. But this one here is important because this one here is going to be saving lives. I'm angry, I'm ashamed, I'm disgusted, I'm disappointed. Someone's died. Someone's died on our watch. And you know why? Because we're dragging our feet, that's why. This is something that we should have addressed and passed a long time ago. Because all we're doing right now is planting the seed, the planting the seed of hope for a better environment, a safer environment for people to live in. We keep dragging our feet, and we have another death. That's on us. That's on us as a community, as a community. That's unacceptable. This death was unacceptable, absolutely unacceptable. And that's only because we got involved in this big political minutia of doing this, doing that, doing the little tiny things. Those can all be addressed. Those are all good points. I'm listening to all the little comments over here. Sure, let's change it if need be, but let's do something now that's going to save lives. Thank you.
Counselor Stott.
Thank you, Chair Cohen. I will be quick in my tiny minutia detail. I'm going to switch gears a little. I have a comment for the city solicitor. Before we get to public comment, I think this might be important to mention. The map that we have in front of us, totally not what I was expecting from reading the language in the ordinance. The language states 15, I believe it's 15 miles from a municipality border and anything within. This is more of a buffer zone from the Salem border for 15 miles. So the way it's written, the way I read it, and this is, again, is a question for the city solicitor, maybe mull over during public comment, but the way it's written, if a city is within the 15 miles, anything within that city could be considered available shelter. That's the way that this is written now. So, but the map shows more of a buffer zone of 15 miles from the border of Salem, or 5, 10, 15, the various different variations that we see. I just wanted to run that by you.
The map was prepared by our IT department. It was their interpretation.
Right, so that's why I want to make sure that the interpretation of what we're considering, 5, 10, and 15, this map is very different from what is written in the ordinance.
So I'm just going to throw this to the two solicitors. So the map is not actually part of the ordinance. It's referring to the map. And is it possible that we could just, if this goes into effect, we will have a map that reflects the ordinance?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Counselor Stott.
Thank you, Chair. Just to that note, I would like to understand what that, see visually before I decide on 5, 10, or 15, or before we decide as a body. I'd like to visually see what that is, because there's a drastic difference of 15 miles to municipality border and anything within, or a 15-mile buffer, 5, 10, or 15, whatever number we're talking about. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. Any other counselors? Okay, we're going to open it up to public testimony. So a couple of things. If you feel like volunteering a name and address, please do so. It's not required. Everyone will get two minutes, and you don't have to take all two minutes, but you will get up to two minutes. You need to direct your comments to me as the chair. We are going to start with anyone who has not testified at the last meeting. And then we will continue with people in the room, and then we will go to people in Zoomland. Okay? Oh, if I could mention one other thing. Just so people in Zoomland can hear, it's really important that you speak like you're eating the microphone, okay?
Nobody's ever called me quiet.
But, but people in Zoomland won't hear you if you're not at the microphone.
Probably. Well, I had all these remarks, and I think this has been a very limiting meeting. I have to say, Life Bridge is amazing. I've worked with them in the tertiary capacity, but we are lucky to have them as a resource. But as Counselor Davis has mentioned, one of the big problems with this ordinance is that it is very prescriptive in an area that requires a lot of flexibility. And I'm speaking as somebody that is a veteran, that has worked on military and veteran issues for two congressional offices, and have a lot of experience in working on these housing issues in a federal and local capacity. And these problems are complicated, nuanced, and require a lot of flexibility to kind of address. And right now, this legislation or this proposal really confines the ability for us to address this issue in the future. And it really relies on the goodwill of our current actors. It doesn't really anticipate what future governments look like or what future problems might arise. We're trying to prescribe an issue where we haven't even really fully defined or understood the issue. Like everybody's been saying, this is an unprecedented problem, but we're kind of going back to the same toolbox of what we know has failed. And I am so happy that some of the prejudiced language that was incorporated in the previous drafts have been removed in saying there was trafficking and saying that there was drug use or whatever that language was. I think it was really inappropriate, and I, really makes me wonder, if we were talking about homeless veterans, would we be having the same conversation? And if not, then why? Because me, myself, as a veteran, I've had access to resources, to wraparound resources that most other people in this community will not have. And it's because of those services that I have been able to succeed. And I think this prohibits us from really providing those services.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Robby, I run a business on Bridge Street. I really think this ordinance is more than reasonable, and it seems to me that it treats the unhoused with dignity. It's going to provide for their safety, not only for them, but safety for residents. And the situation that we have now is not good for the unhoused, and it's really not fair to the businesses that are in the area, that it's harming them. And, you know, these are just regular work and people like everyone else. If it was across from my business, I would, I would find it troubling. Again, nothing against the unhoused people, but we should help them this way. It makes sense. And, and just to be fair to everyone, what if I invited 1,000 friends to bring tents and just come and camp out on the Common, even though we don't have to, and just stay there for a week? Would I be allowed to do that in the absence of something like this? So I would like to see the ordinance passed, and thank you very much.
I live across from the South River Homeless Encampment. We had a male friend visiting last October who was chased by a man from the encampment demanding money. He was chased from Lafayette Street to Bung Ho Liquors, and an employee of the liquor store chased that man away. I'm frequently asked for money by people from the encampment, and they get very angry when I refuse. I find it very frightening, especially when they're obviously under the influence of something, and I don't know what they're capable of. I feel like I need my. I feel like I need my husband to escort me when I walk around Salem. I fully support the approval of the change to the ordinance. I think it's desperately needed, and I really appreciate all the work that you have put into it. Thank you.
Thank you Mr. Chairman. My name is Beth Dibski. I'm the Executive Director of the Salem Partnership. And I'm here on behalf of the partnership to express our support for the proposed ordinance. Over the last several months, the partnership's executive committee has discussed the issues surrounding the unhoused population in Salem, especially those living in the South River Encampment. Some of our members operate businesses in proximity to the encampment. Those businesses, their customers, and employees have been negatively impacted by the presence of the encampment. We have heard from experts, I have been in several meetings with the police chief and with the city, and people from Washington have told us that the people that live in the encampments, their best night is the first night that they're there. And every night after that, their quality of life decreases. So we really support the city's efforts to create the new emergency shelter space and to provide clean, safe housing and services for the people experiencing homelessness. Thank you so much for all your work on this matter.
Hello, is this good? Yeah. Name is Matvey. I am over in Beverly. Salem is nice though. I'm here right now. And I very much hear the concerns a lot of people in this room have for safety, for having a city that feels walkable no matter where you go, for all of these things. But I'm just afraid that, like the person who spoke a little earlier said, we're using the wrong tools here. Because by sweeping the homeless people in the encampment, we're not sweeping the homelessness. We're not sweeping the rent, which is growing at thirty percent faster than national average in Salem. We're not sweeping the fifty percent poverty rate, which is fifty percent above Massachusetts' average. We have a lot of issues that unfortunately manifest in that encampment space, right? That reveal themselves in that space. But that encampment is not the root of the issues we're trying to address. And by removing these people, by not first creating conditions where they can choose for themselves where they go, how they go, where they also feel safe, that this city belongs to them and the city cares for them, we're not gonna solve the problem. Because we may remove these people, but all of the things that they're struggling with will be passed down onto other members of community, because those issues will remain. Rent continues to grow. Poverty has only risen in the last few years. And this is it. Yeah, thank you so much. I really appreciate the work you've done on this already. And I hope that we will arrive at something as soon as possible, but I genuinely do not believe that this is the solution. I'm worried that more lives will be lost than saved as a result of this being passed in its current iteration.
My comment to the committee is this, coming from a veteran. If your goal is genuinely not to make homelessness illegal, if your real concern and last resort is to arrest someone based on their illegal behaviors, arrest them on those behaviors, not on the basis of homelessness. There is no excuse, and there is no need.
Hello, my name is Jen Coverdale. I live on Horton Street in Ward Three. I'm currently a public school teacher and I previously worked in social services, helping people with food access in Beverly and in Lynn. And I'm here tonight because I hear the council's intent to not be criminalizing people, but I'm worried that the language of this law is, has a potential to create barriers for people to access safety, which I know is not the intent behind it. But as somebody who navigates systems myself, I think about how much having to put my car in snowparking can affect my day. And working with students who have been homeless and families who have been homeless, and seeing how the more complex a system is for somebody to navigate, it can really hold people back from achieving what they need to achieve for their safety and well-being. And so thinking about the possibility of a three hundred dollar fine or a court appearance, and how that could really, or even being separated from someone's belongings fifteen miles away could really affect their ability to do what they need to do to be safe and well. So, thank you.
Chair, members of the council, offices of the city here. My name is Bill Golden. I'm the Director of Real Pirates Salem at 285 Derby Street. And I've listened very carefully to the comments of Council Davis and the others that have spoken, and they are all right. This is a very complex issue. It requires enormous sensitivity. But I don't just speak as a business owner here, I speak as a person that's worked from the White House down to City Hall. I've been a state senator in Massachusetts. I've sat where you are. I've been city solicitor in the city of Quincy, sat through these meetings. These are extraordinarily difficult issues. Each one of you has a different perspective that reflects the perspectives in this room. And you've brought that together. So I speak in support of this ordinance, not as an end to your deliberations, but to a very necessary beginning of those deliberations. I think the worst thing that could happen here is to ignore the situation that we have here. Ignore the people that are looking for housing. Ignore the people that need services. Ignore camps. To ignore these camps is to ignore the issues they represent. And while tonight's ordinance may not be perfect, no ordinance is, it is, I think, a beginning where all of you have expressed a great deal of sensitivity in trying to make something so that we do focus on this issue. The worst thing we could do is just ignore the people in those camps. Ignore them. Let those camps spread. Would we be servicing their needs, their services if we did that? So thank you very much. I, I support this, and I thank you for your sensitivity. The attempts to read Equo Poise. Council Davis, you're not finished here. Nobody's finished in this room. But this is the beginning that has to happen. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, counselors. My name is Dan Brunk. I live at 51 Lafayette Street. I've been a resident for almost two years now in Salem. I have emailed all of you over the weekend, so you've probably received my email. I'm not gonna go into the details of that email. But I listed the things that, as witnessing from either sitting at the former flatbread, altercations, issues that have gone on over there. And it's been troublesome knowing that that affects the city. And the more that affects the city, then the more it impacts any sort of help that can be done. I, just, you may know that a lot of this is based on this model of not being able to move, is based on some litigation from the Ninth Circuit in West Coast of, well, Supreme Court heard a case earlier this week on a similar case from Oregon. So this is not going on, you know, this is gonna continue across the country. It's a problem. The Supreme Court's not gonna fix this. We're not gonna be able to fix this tonight, but we need to find a way to begin with this. The change that needs to happen is beginning, as the gentleman said before, starting with this. It's not gonna be perfect, but we need to find a way to make sure that the problems that are subsequent and are caused from being, these social problems, you know, that have happened, need to be addressed. Not, we can't fix the big problems, but we need to address the ongoing problems underneath that. So I support the ordinance as it is, but do encourage continued review of this and editing, modification as necessary. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, City Council. My name is Nathan Ritzko. I'd like to lend my voice in support of the ordinance, and I'd like to echo the themes of the previous two speakers. They've said it quite well, I won't rehash it all in the interest of time, but I do see a lot of compassion in what has been written in the drafts that I've reviewed. Clearly, this has been weighed, and I recognize, as others have said, that it is quite difficult and it is nuanced. But I do think this reflects an attempt to prevent the perfect from being the enemy of the good. And I support this ordinance for a good step in the right direction, and I support it. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tom Custer. I have written all of you an email, so listing what it's like living close to the encampment and how it's impacted our lives. So I won't reiterate any of all of that, just to, just wanted to say that the problems continue, as long as the encampment's there, still having problems with it. So I would hope that for both the residents of the encampment's health and public safety and local residents and workers' health and safety, I hope you pass this ordinance quickly, because I think it's an excellent first step toward dealing with the problem. Thank you.
I'm Ed Sacco, and I live on Winthrop Street. I also worked in the field and worked with people who had major disabilities and major mental health problems for fifty years. I ran an agency. And in that agency, it kinda shows me where you folks need to go right now. We were very successful in treating people and caring for people. What you need to do is take the next step. You're really at first base. You need to have permanent housing for everybody, and you need to have staffing for everybody. And when I say staffing, I'm talking about people who are gonna be case managers, and they, each individual will need between seven and twenty hours of case management every week. They need to work on where they are living, making sure they can stay where they're living, making sure that people are eating correctly, making sure that people are taking their medicine. You need to go to doctor's appointments and psych appointments with them. You have to make sure that people follow doctors' plans. You have to do all of these things, and it takes hours and it takes staff to do it. We will not be successful with these individuals until we start doing those things. They're very important. They're not gonna be easy. The money is out there, it's in the federal government. The city does not have the money for these types of services, I realize that. The money is there, and we need to go get that money to have those services. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Emmylou Manuel. I live on Heritage Drive up by the hospital. And I wanted to follow up with that comment mostly because I read an article about the mass and cast crackdown from Boston Public Radio that talks about how the services and the service providers have been struggling to find their people since the Boston camping ordinance got passed. So, the people that were affected by this camping ordinance are not getting the services that they used to get. They're not meeting with the caseworkers they used to meet with because they've been dispersed or arrested. Boston police officers conducted two hundred and eighty-three arrests in the immediate area around Mass and Cast between November and February. So arrests are happening. Homeless advocates say more people have grown afraid of seeking services. They're worried about being picked up on past warrants or simply for being homeless. So I think there really could be some negative impacts, and I think from my legal perspective, the biggest concern to me is the fifteen mile radius of shelter spaces and trying to redefine what shelter in Salem includes shelter spaces outside of Salem. I don't think that's where the current law stands. I don't think that that's a positive move to push people fifteen miles away from their belongings. And I'm honestly not sure if it's even constitutional. I'm not sure if an ordinance has tried to define shelter in other jurisdictions, but I can tell you that the Martin versus Boise case, the holding says, quote, "So long as there is a greater number of homeless individuals in a jurisdiction than the number of available beds in shelters, the jurisdiction cannot prosecute homeless individuals for involuntarily sitting, lying, and sleeping in public." And I think jurisdiction means city. I'm not sure we can redefine that.
No, that's ten seconds, so you get, yeah, I'm given like
Thank you.
Anyone else who hasn't spoken before?
Hi, I'm Pastor Barbara Otto of Grace Lutheran Mission. And I work with a number of homeless people around the North Shore. So, building on what was last said, it's not really a lot of places for people to go fif, if, within a fifteen mile radius of Salem. Shelters, it's really, really not much. A lot of people in other communities are in the same, same position. And people being separated from their stuff, there's no way that they're gonna be able to get, get their stuff again. And we've seen already, a lot of people have lost, of all the, the years I've been working out with the homeless, many have lost their stuff over the years. And there's no way of them ever getting back. I'm reminded of a young couple who became homeless after losing their child, and they had pictures of their child in a suitcase. And while they were out looking for something to eat, they were camping out in the woods. DPW had come and cleaned out their site, and they lost all the pictures of their, your child. Nothing, no way for them to get anything back. So remember, these are people, and they need your grace and your mercy and, and your compassion. So the forty-eight hour thing, that's not, that's not gonna be enough time for somebody to move on to, to find a new place. You need to give them grace of time. Thank you.
People who haven't spoken before? Didn't speak at the last meeting?
My name is Kevin Arrington. I live at thirty-three Essex Street here in Salem. In the past, I've worked as a tour guide. Right now, I work as your city carrier. Every day, I walk by the remnants of the encampment. And I'm concerned about this ordinance. It might be motivated by good intentions, but as we were saying earlier, I believe the tools that we're using are not adequate to correct it. I think we should be motivated by safety for them, for us, for everyone, and success. These moves designed to help them elevate themselves out of that situation. Nobody wants to spend the rest of their lives in an encampment. So I ask you to please find a way to temper this. So I ask you to please find a way to temper this. And I'd like our resources to be ployed in a way of compassion instead of cruelty. Operation Clean Sweep was a nightmare for the people that, that encountered it and I don't think we should be using that as a model here in Salem. Salem's name is the place of peace. It's a good harbor. It's a refuge for all of us. These people were banding together in essence of community to survive. Think about that. They were just trying to survive. So we have to be motivated by a way to help them thrive, not just get by day to day. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Mary Blanco. I live on 12 First Street in Salem by Mark Baskin Hawthorne Square. I grew up in Salem all my life. I was born in New York, raised in Salem. I love Salem as community, as a town, as a whole. But the only problem I really see here is we got to start at where it began, with the people, the local business that helps community build. And with the rent being so high, while people are losing their houses and businesses in financial crisis, if we don't fix that problem or we don't help them out as a community or as a whole, where are we going to go from there? Because not for nothing, I have friends in the community that are homeless, don't have a house, don't have a job, don't have a car. And by placing these cornettes and these placements, where else are they going to go? Because if I were in their shoes, I want someone to help me out and not abandon me like other people have in the past. So that's all I got to say.
Okay, everyone else has spoken before? So we're going to go around the room. Same thing, two minutes. Go.
Hello. Throughout, throughout this public comment period, you will hear another joint statement written by the members of Witch City Action, Witch City Punks Against Hate and Salem Survival Program, direct action organizations whose goal since their inception has been to work directly with the unhoused population of Salem without bias of nonprofit status or city mandate. Through the work we have done on the streets directly providing shelter, food, transportation, and care, we understand what is at stake here. There is substantial documentation and research that proves camping bans and ordinances like the ones being proposed do not end homelessness and instead exasperate existing struggles faced by those without shelter. This ordinance was taken from Mayor Wu's Boston No Camping Ordinance that criminalizes being unhoused. Despite the claim of good intentions, we must stress that this amendment will make it illegal to sleep in a tent and have a sleeping bag or exist outside when shelter beds are available within 15 miles of Salem borders, under threat of fines up to $300 and arrest without a warrant. Displacing encampments are harmful to the unhoused community. A Journal of American Medical Association study shows sweeps have been found to lead to substantial increases in overdose deaths, hospitalizations, and life-threatening infections, as well as hinder access to medications for opioid use disorder, along with other detrimental impacts. You will hear a joint statement read by ordinary people brought together over the common goal of creating support for a community so often overlooked. This ordinance is not just a banning, is not just banning camping on public property. It will outlaw, it will outlaw unhoused people's survival. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Caitlin Tricomi. I'm a public health professional and it goes against my personal and professional beliefs to support this ordinance. I do also want to echo Counselor Davis's concerns about eligible property and what is deemed unsafe to store by the Board of Health. With the Boston ordinance, folks couldn't store anything that was wet or bulky, which often means items that would be useful for survival outside and were often stolen by cops and thrown away. And often folks stay with their belongings because they miss opportunities and thus miss opportunities to access support and services. So at the last meeting, I said the largest crisis to public safety is overdose deaths. And on April 15th, our 59-year-old man, Andrew Carboni, passed away, who was a resident at the encampment. And as the community grieves the loss of Andrew, city officials are attempting to use his death to choke fear in the community and from some public comments that they don't know what residents are capable of. The use of language of community care and there'll always be a health concern when people live outside falsely characterizes the proposed ordinance as an act of care versus the act of criminalization. While there are always health concerns when people live outside, this ordinance fails to take into account the dangerous conditions the city of Salem is complicit in creating. People who use drugs are human and deserve the same love and compassion as anyone else. And from the Department of Mass Department of Public Health, there were 1,718 preventable overdoses in December from 2023. No one is arguing that the risk of death from overdose is not real and this ordinance does not provide services, solutions, or any harm reduction measures to actually meet the needs of those in crisis. Instead, it enforces a policy that makes those who are unhoused more challenging and less safe. It's the, not the existence of the encampment that's to blame for this loss. It's the failure of the city to provide housing and basic services to those most vulnerable. What would have changed before and after this ordinance that makes the shelter system more viable for people forced to live outside? Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Chris Terry, 20th and 21st Street. It is crucial to understand that for many people, the shelter system can be dangerous. And basically, the shelter system is good for a lot of people, but not for everyone. People have been, here, I'll go back to reading this. Last weekend, I spoke to someone that lives in a tent in the woods, not part of the encampment, but in the woods, another part of Salem. And he's afraid that these ordinances will affect him severely. He's been there for a long while, minding his own business. He tries to contribute to society wherever he can. And my concern is like you're painting everyone that is homeless as a drug-addicted, mental health criminal, and that's not the case. You have a lot of people that because of finances have lost housing, has lost jobs, has lost the ability to live in a safe and secure place. And he's afraid that this, okay, this ordinance will make what he's doing illegal. Thank you.
So I'm Skylar Clark and I live on 282 Derby Street. So with a looming Supreme Court decision that could allow other towns to create more dangerous and restrictive laws, by deciding that our policy should be to move people away, we become responsible for subjecting our residents to the worst version of this ordinance in the places that we move them to. So we may have the best intentions here in Salem and we may find adequate bed for one night, but if our ordinance moves someone to a town with more violent policies than ours, we may be as just as complicit in that outcome as if we passed that policy here tonight. So when we create systems or do the work to fix them, our purpose statement doesn't matter. The most important thing to know is that a system's purpose is what it does and there is no point in claiming a system's purpose is what it fails to do. If we're working to create a system whose goal is to help connect our unhoused residents with services, it's nonsense to say that the outcome of that system could ever be forced displacement and criminal charges. If we're creating a system that criminalizes homelessness, the outcome will be fines and arrests as prescribed by this ordinance. When we work together to make change in the world, we need to mean what we say. If we allow ourselves to hold these systems accountable for the conditions they create, we will find a way to repair them. But if we refuse to accept that our best intentions can create broken systems, we will never find the courage to fix them.
Hi, my name is Tim Clark and I manage four properties on Derby Street that also have bought the South River. We agree that everyone has a right to shelter and are supporter of the city's plan to provide shelter and services to encampment residents. Our commercial tenants have experienced detrimental impacts since the presence of the encampment in the South River. Specifically, foot traffic is down and sales are off. The average person will avoid this area given the choice. Trash from the encampment has been put in tenants' dumpsters and also just dumped at our properties. Flatbread has closed permanently. Their assistant manager reports to the chamber meeting that foot traffic and lower sales combined with uncivil behavior by these adjacent residents has impacted their business greatly. You may not be aware that there was a fire at Home Decor Paint Store at 281 Derby Street about a month ago. Fire department responded promptly and did a great job minimizing damage. It's going to take some time to get this business back open. The fire had nothing to do with the encampment, but a closed store for three to four months that brings a lot of customers to Salem is another hurdle for the balance of the businesses in this area. As far as the business community is concerned, this matter should have been addressed months ago. If and when the encampment is cleared, it will take a while to get the foot traffic and sales numbers back to these businesses. Please take action on this matter with the real sense of urgency it deserves for all impacted parties. Lastly, for every person like me speaking in favor of this ordinance, there are several more who fear the bad PR to the businesses for supporting what you need to do here today. There's a lot of support for this ordinance in this own community. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Skylar Ward. I'm on Forest Avenue in the Treasure of Solidarity Rising. If the intent is to do good by these people, then we have to get the wording right. We have to get the definitions right. We have to get the contents, context for the definition of the wording right. And I ask the councilors to honestly consider the amendments presented by Counselor Davis. We have the chance to do something good, right? We just need to make sure that we're putting our best foot forward. The worst thing that you can have with loose terminology, definitions, wording in any legislation is for that to be misinterpreted and used to harm someone. Thank you.
I'm Chris Terry.
Speaking to the-
My apologies. I am Chris Terry. I live at New Derby and Lafayette. Been here for about two years now. I'd like to say that even if this ordinance is the right idea, I think it's kind of poorly planned out at this point. I am a cloud engineer. When I make mistakes, billions of people notice and so I have to think through things ahead of time. And I've noticed some basics, like we claim that we are going to be taking care of or safeguarding people's property, but do we have even an Excel spreadsheet for managing that? Any idea where that property is going to be stored? Any plans for what we're going to be doing with it? Managing it long-term for anybody who needs long-term medical help, for instance? What if they're gone for six months and they need to come back to their stuff? Has anybody bothered to care about it? I just want to make sure that if we're doing this, we do it correctly. I don't think this provides the baseline to do that. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Andy Lippman. I'm here to speak in favor of the ordinance. I think you're doing a compassionate thing and a good thing, not necessarily a perfect thing, but a great first step and something that will monitor and watch and keep tabs on and amend and adjust as needed and as it actually lays out. But I would like to add one comment with respect to the 15-mile radius, and that is the issue of homelessness is not a Salem problem and it's not a city-by-city problem. It's a nationwide problem and certainly a regional problem. And by allowing us to place people in the surrounding community, we may in fact be putting them closer to where they work and where their belongings belong because it isn't clear that they all came just from Salem itself. So I urge you to retain that freedom and ability to put people inside the entire community. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Nate. I've been working in education and mental health for the last six years. I live here in Salem on Carlton Street. I guess the main thing that I just want to say is, it sounds like, based on everything I'm hearing, everyone wants these people to be housed. So I don't understand the arrest and the $300 fine. Why not provide long-term case management and actual long-term housing? I think the services that Ed suggested earlier are really what I'm piggybacking on here. I think case management services are incredibly important if we're serious about keeping these people off the street for, you know, longer than just a day or a month. I think it's really important to really consider how this is going to affect people's lives. And I think you've heard plenty of examples tonight on why that is. I just wanted to reinforce that this ordinance does not provide the services necessary to help people stay stable. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'd like to ask the council, why are we attempting to implement a strategy that has a national success rate of 0% to addressing chronic homelessness? Why are we advocating for punitive measures to address encampments that in comparable situations across the nation have cost cities over 60% more in municipal funds than just simply funding housing and social services for folks? Why are we misrepresenting the goals of this ordinance and framing it as community care when there are countless, countless studies and real-world examples that have proven strategies that restrict and punish homelessness lead to a decrease in public health, increased financial stress, and increased risks of drug overdoses? These studies and examples are really not difficult to find, so we're kind of left to wonder if these types of ordinances are vastly evidenced as ineffective, costly, and harmful, how did we come to the discussion of this meeting today? And kind of what we're left with is the truth of why this ordinance is being pushed in our community, in my opinion. To quote one of our own federal elected officials, "You go outside to have a beer and you're just looking at this homeless encampment. Our city is uncomfortable witnessing visually poor neighbors exist in public and would rather push those unwilling to enter the shelter system out of our community or into the prison system rather than providing housing, services, and dignity to those that are most vulnerable." That's really the truth at the heart of this ordinance. And instead, we should be investing our resources, our funding, and our- And instead, we should be investing our resources, our funding, and our care to services that will support folks in the long term. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Reese Graves. I also live at 282 Derby Street and I'm following up with what she said. The city emphasizes that these ordinance would only be a tool within a larger variety of strategies to address chronic homelessness in our community. But I'd like to suggest that it be completely removed from the toolbox. We are not asking for edits to the ordinance. We are asking that we do not participate in the criminalization of living outside when there are simply no other options. The fact of the matter is that the shelter system is not an option for everyone in our community, such as those of us, those of the homeless community that have been kicked out of the shelter system, no matter what changes have been made. So what happens to the woman who refuses shelter because her abuser is staying at the same location? She must be faced with punitive measures, be displaced from her community, or hide from law enforcement to locations where it's impossible, and now receive social services. We really need to reckon with the fact that this ordinance is only being proposed to stop housed residents from feeling uncomfortable and disgusted and to push the larger fight for a more just and caring community out of town completely. I challenge the council to think about evidence-based strategies to reduce chronic homelessness, like Housing First prescribing housing, that have been successful in dozens of communities across the nation, rather than an ordinance that will only build distrust within our city and its unhoused residents, displace our neighbors, and continue the cycle of poverty.
My name's Annie Harris and I support the ordinance and really applaud the council for working on this. I see it very much as a first step and really agree with the speakers that have said we need to do something. I think the city is working on a lot of other fronts. As the people that just spoke before me talked about more services, more housing, more money put into dealing with the problems of homelessness, and I think the city is really doing that. But all that stuff takes a lot of time and money, and this is a very important first step, so I really support it.
Could you put the mic up to your mouse? Yeah, yep, sorry. A little ill-prepared. I just got here. But I feel like a lot of the comments in agreement for this are from the business. I feel like a lot of the comments in agreement with this are from the businesses who have complaints like trash, bathroom, and foot traffic causing problems to their business. And I don't see how this is because of the homeless people in the city. I feel this is a direct cause of the city not providing trash, not providing public bathrooms. And as far as foot traffic going destroying your businesses, this will not save it. We're all out of money. You all sell trash. Like, getting rid of the homeless people is not going to fix your business. And then my other point is, on the Salem tourist site, it lists five major markets, one of them being the LGBT community. And I don't know if you know the homeless rates. I don't have them written off off my head, but I assure you, if you look them up, it does not support the case that this is good for your LGBT residents and visitors. So if you're prepared to lose all of your residents and visitors who have a conscience for this, that won't solve any of your problems. What a move. Thank you.
Anyone else in the room that want to do public testimony? Okay. Okay, we're going to go to people in Zoom land. So if you do wish to talk, please raise your hand. Remember, each person gets two minutes. And if you want to volunteer your name and address, go ahead and do so. And we're going to start with Meg Tuohy. You can unmute yourself, Meg, and speak.
Hi, my name is Meg Tuohy. I'm a Salem resident. And I do support this ordinance as a first step. However, I did, I did in my email to the council, raise a number of the issues that have been raised tonight, in particular, the safety of those people that have been cared for well by the police in camping, particularly out in the woods, and our longtime residents out there. I think they, I would hope they would remain. And it's not clear how they are protected. It's also not particularly, it's not clear at all how women are protected in this environment. And I think that's very important to address. I also would suggest that it's very important, now that we have a new transition shelter, that Life Bridge and the city work together to publicize to those of us who live in the city the rules for what happens at the shelter at Margin Street and what happens or what the rules are at the shelter on Canal Street, so that we understand those. And then finally, as we look to the future, I very much echo the concern of those who've spoken tonight about the need for services and the need for housing and a concern that there may not be enough funding for that and that we are at the beginning of responding to a very large crisis. But I also want to echo those who've spoken in favor of a regional solution by bringing online the Transition Center on Canal Street. I believe we offer the most beds on the North Shore, more than, significantly more than double that of Lynn. And there are very, very few shelter beds in other communities or services. So then I urge the council, as we move forward, to look at working for a regional solution, because having this problem concentrated in Salem's downtown will ultimately lead us to a massive gas, which is not what we want. And also, it puts at risk our economy and the quality of life of a city so that we actually would not be able to care for the homeless as well as we could if we remain a healthy and vibrant city. Thank you so much.
Sarah Clermont. You can unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hi, my name's Sarah Clermont. I'm lucky to be a homeowner on Carlton Street. I'm here to share my input as a clinician with an NPH. While I understand the positive intentions of an anti-camping ordinance like this, the data does not support this approach. Studies show that these policies, as written, have the potential to cause further distress between our homeless neighbors and support services. And in some cases, people living in an encampment remain outside but get pushed into further isolated and dangerous environments and without a tent for shelter. In Boston, for example, there are still dozens of unaccounted individuals who have, who had been receiving services and are now missing. There are so many reasons a person would choose not to go into a shelter and to force people into shelters is awfully paternalistic. As a clinician, if I had told my patient that I would not give them an inhaler until they quit smoking, I would be doing a greater disservice to them and their health. This ordinance includes many positives ideas, such as an up-to-date list of available shelter beds and free transportation to provide our neighbors with kind, warm options. But that could be done without a law and does not require options for penalties or arrests to achieve that outcome. Many courts in this country have found ordinance like this to be cruel and unusual punishment, and that does not sound like the community I have come to know. A tent may not be a roof, but a shelter bed is not a home and stable housing must come first.
Madison Musinski. You can unmute and speak. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Madison. I'm a student at Salem State University. I do oppose this amendment. I think all the points that were made about asking our community whether we are uncomfortable with viewing homelessness and having it being a visible thing versus actually wanting to help those who are homeless in our community is the big issue here. We are not starting at a point that would actually be beneficial for these people. We'd be starting at a point that would lead to criminalization and force them into a cycle of criminalization. Thank you.
Joe Riley. You can unmute yourself and speak.
Thank you for the opportunity. I'm going to be short and sweet with this. I have the utmost respect for how the city of Salem has tried to take care of this community and the most vulnerable amongst them. But from a business perspective, I am somebody who lives in neighboring Pevity. I work in Salem every day. I am the chairman of the Salem Partnership. And I will tell you that as somebody who has been in this, this area for the last 40-plus years, I have watched Salem develop over time. And I will tell you that it was a very short period of time ago, 20, 25 years, when nobody would look to Salem as a place that they wanted to go to live, to be entertained. All of the things that have, over the last 20 to 25 years, have happened to this city. When you start losing the instruments of economic development that become the mainstream vibrancy for your city, like Flatbread Pizza leaving, and others who will follow, and they most certainly will follow, you are taking all of the progress of this city and turning it around. And it will, in short order, because no one will fill in their place. It will become much like it was 25 to 30 years ago, a place with an incredible amount of potential that nobody really wants to live in. And that will have implications, not only for the business community, but for all of the residents of this city. So that's one man's opinion, but that's what I have lived and what I have seen as somebody relatively new to this area. Thank you.
If anyone else online wants to speak, please raise your hand. Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Sean O'Connor. You can unmute and speak.
Yeah, so first off, I'd like to say that I support the ordinance. You know, I think it's thoughtful and it's compassionate. I mean, one of the things is everybody, everybody needs a roof over their head, and I think this is a step in the right direction. But in some ways, I kind of feel like people aren't being practical too. Like, we're not going to solve homelessness here. You know, we have people that are camping on our streets. And I really don't think that's just acceptable. Maybe 10 tents is, we can argue about it, but 20 tents, 50 tents, 500 tents. Can I invite my friends? Can my friends stay there? I think we have to, we have to take action to do something on this. I think that there's two issues here, this camping on the street and this homelessness. We're not going to solve homelessness over here. One other thing on this is, we as citizens, we own the sidewalk. I own a little piece of it. Somebody else owns a little piece of it. And it's not unreasonable to say that I want to save sidewalk. I walk my dogs down here every single night. Two times in the last six months, a couple of the unhoused people I chat with, I really enjoy them, they said, "Hey, don't go to the other side of the river. The guy over there's got a gun over there." Is this okay? Is it okay that we, we've now got to the point where we say it's okay for safety not to, to exist on our city sidewalks? I own a little piece of it. Everybody owns a little piece of it. I think we need to pass this ordinance. I do not think it's acceptable for people to be tenting out on the streets in our city or any place in the country. We can have a bigger conversation on homelessness. We need compassion. This needs to be done at the federal level. I don't think the city of Salem is going to solve it. I don't think the sidewalk is an acceptable place for people to be living. I think we need to move forward with this ordinance. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, everyone, for public comment. And we're going to pull it back into the council now. If people have other comments or concerns or things they want to weigh in on. I'm assuming that Councilor Harvey left. Yes, he did. Okay. Councilor Marshall.
Thank you, Chair. Could we get some clarification on the 15-mile? What, what is that supposed to mean? Is it supposed to mean if the 15 miles is within a certain location, then it would include all of that municipality? Or is it just, just within 15 miles?
The way the text reads right now, it says, "Other municipalities which the nearest border said municipality is no more than 15 miles from the nearest border of Salem." So when the IT director comes back tomorrow, I will ask her to incorporate the entire community show on the map, not just the 15 miles. It includes that community in its entirety.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Councilor Stark.
Thank you, Chair. And just to spur off of that, I'm curious, is that the intent? The intent is that if, so Olive Nahant, for example, well, let's go to the 15 miles, because that's how it's written now. Is the intent that, you know, anyone as far as looks like North Andover, Olive, Boston, South Shore, Quincy, like, is that the intent that those cities, the entirety of those cities? So whether or not it's within the 15-mile buffer, but something that logistically could be 30 miles away from Salem? I'm just curious what the intent is. Because we have two maps, or we have a map and then we have language.
So the language is to include the communities. So we will have the maps redone for you before you deliberate again on this.
Maybe I could volunteer.
So I guess I'd like to rephrase my question then. What's, what does the council intend, what intention there?
I, I can't believe you just stole the words I was going to say. Councilor Stark. You know, this ordinance was given to us by the mayor and now it's our ordinance. So I think it's up to us to decide. I really feel, and I hope people find this to be a positive, that based on, you know, comments that were in the counselor and in the public at the last meeting, that being close proximity to transit was actually more important than the distance. Because I'll just give you my personal opinion is that, just like Chief Miller said, 15 miles, 48 hours, these are numbers. These are arbitrary. You know, like 12.7 miles, like, I don't, personally, I'm not as tied to the actual mileage, but I think it's really up to us. So I'm going to throw this back at you, Councilor Stark. Do you have a, like, an idea of what you think would be appropriate?
Thank you, Chair. What was in my mind versus what I'm seeing on the map are just two very different things. So I think I'm digesting it. Like, the 15 miles seems reasonable because it does include a lot of the transit options, but it still seemed options, but it still seems seems very far to me. So I guess I'd leave it at that and like to open it up to the council for discussion.
I have a feeling that Counselor Davis wants to weigh in on the distance.
Thank you, Chair. My view on the radius would be that what works for some people doesn't work for others, right? Like as we talked about with employment, right? Fifteen miles away wouldn't make sense for someone who's employed in Salem. If there is an amazing, secure domestic violence shelter fifteen miles away, maybe that doesn't make sense for that particular person. If someone as I sent language to articulate, if someone can show that they have a specific service nearby or a specific family member that they rely on for rides or transportation or whatever, it makes sense. So I think the radius in general is going to be arbitrary regardless. I'd like to see language that treats different individuals differently.
If you don't mind responding to that a little bit. When James and Beth and I were speaking about this after your you know, your proposed edits. And then I had a conversation with Jason from Life Bridge and really the saddest irony of this exercise about distance is how few facilities and shelters are available and how limited they are. So although I don't, I'm just giving you my opinion, Counselor Davis, although I don't disagree that we should have more defined things, we don't really have as many opportunities. I think I just want to give credit to the city and Life Bridge for finding the transition center that we have, which, you know, as we talked about, it's not just finding a place for people to be somewhere. It's a place where people can come as you are and stay as long as you want and and provide services. And we do know a lot of the people who are in the encampments or unhoused in Salem in general do work in the area. So I think that was the thing that really affected me the most is how few options there are outside of. Council Scott.
Thank you, Chair. So while yes, it is quite arbitrary, this number that we're coming up, it is something that we're putting in ordinance, and I do feel as the ordinance is written of fifteen miles with the borders, that's too far. I would, I would request an amendment, not being a member of the committee, to have it be more written like the map is displaying a fifteen mile buffer within the shelter itself is located within fifteen miles from the city. I feel that's just very expensive to, we have some larger municipalities around.
Can I ask you to to, like, I didn't understand it exactly as you said it. But if you rephrase it, maybe another counselor on the committee.
So not being a member of the committee, if I was a member of the committee, I would request an amendment for where is it? For the emergency shelter space means a city authorized location within the city of Salem or within any other or within fifteen miles of the border. I would maybe request the planning department's really good with helping write these location items for the radius, but instead of saying or any other municipality of which the nearest border you said municipality is no more than fifteen miles, I would just remove all of that within the city of Salem or no more than fifteen miles from the nearest border of Salem. So it's just striking or any other municipality of which the nearest border said municipality. So it's basically just saying it's within Salem or within no more than fifteen miles from the border of Salem. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Council Prozinski.
I was going to say I'll gladly make that motion for Counselor Scott.
And just to clarify, that would be like the third map in our package.
Correct.
So we're eliminating after city of Salem or in any other municipality of which the nearest border municipality? Or no more?
Or within fifteen miles.
Within fifteen miles?
In fifteen miles.
Within fifteen miles. Got that? City Solicitor? Okay, so wow. Okay, so Counselor Prozinski made the motion. Counselor Marcelo seconded it. All those in favor? Counselor Merkel.
Thank you, Chair Cohen, not being a member of the committee. I'd also, based on our previous discussion and feedback from Chief Miller, I'd certainly welcome a motion to change it to seventy-two hours, just to give a little bit more breathing room, tiny change. Where is that?
It's at the top of the last page.
On the last page? Versus it's there.
First paragraph.
Counsel Prozinski.
Seeing that Chief Miller and Mr. Palmer will probably be the primary caretakers of the property. And he has no opposition to the seventy-two hours. And I make a motion that that change be made from forty-eight to seventy-two hours.
Second.
Counsel Prozinski makes a motion to change to forty-eight hours to seventy-two hours. I will do an aside that this came from originally from Counselor Davis, seconded by Counselor Marcello. Any discussion? All those in favor? Passes.
Are you doing anything?
Oh. That was four in favor, row against, one absent. Same with the first one.
Are you on the committee?
Why are you here, Counselor Davis?
Given the openness from Chief Miller as well on the item about allowing for additional input when it comes to the storage policy, was wondering if we could see a motion to adopt that. And I'm happy to read that that portion if people would like or to hear from you, the solicitor, if there was any reasons why that couldn't be implemented.
So so we, the chief and I did work on a policy. And so I would suggest that where chief is authorized to create the policy, perhaps that is something that's outside of the ordinance. It may be something that we could incorporate into the policy that we have, a committee that reviews it.
If I could reinforce that, so many of our ordinances or policies refer to a regulation like the urban agriculture, the outdoor dining. And if you're comfortable with this, you know, and one of the positives about a regulation, you know, the health agent administers a lot of those is that they are much it's much easier to respond and change the regulation than to come back and change the ordinance. So are you comfortable with what the solicitor said that she and the chief will work on a on a language that will be reflective of what you're talking about, but it won't be in the ordinance, it will be that it will be administered by the department of a policy? If making me talk in circles.
I think it's worth noting. I think it's worth noting that for complaints about police handling of property, there is both the avenue of making a civilian complaint, the police department, and I'm proud of our ability to investigate those complaints. But there's also a state agency, the Post Commission, that accepts complaints and would automatically be notified of such a complaint. And they would, they oversee our internal investigations, make sure they meet standards. So not to take away from the suggestion of civilian input on this, but our actions with people's property, whether it's somebody who's arrested for a significant crime or somebody whose property we're simply safeguarding so that nothing bad happens to it, we are subject to those complaints and those complaints have to be just to add a little bit.
My concern in that situation would be that the onus would be on this unhoused person that now has to go through the process of finding new housing, new services, all these things that then go through the process of making a complaint and whatnot. So the idea of the advisory committee would be for, you know, dedicated people in the community to put a lot of thought into that. I think if I'm understanding, you're saying that we would, we could pass the ordinance and then later on come back to that portion of it? I don't know if I'm completely understanding.
I'm not saying that we're going to create a committee unless the council votes to create a committee, which is a little more complicated. That's another board and commission and how do we appoint people and who serves on it. I'm gonna, if the chief wouldn't mind coming up to the podium again, I'm going to make a suggestion to the chief, see what he and the solicitor think, that if we do pass the ordinance, at the point that you have established a storage facility of some kind, if you would report back to the council what that is and who else would be part of the process of deciding how to implement that?
Absolutely.
As a first step? Okay. Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just wondering, speaking from complete ignorance on this, is there any sort of a federal or a state standard that we could reference in this? Maybe something we could look into, I'm not positive, but something like, you know, fair market rent, or we point, we use our ordinance to point to that. Something that may change from time to time, but that our ordinance points to. I have no idea if there's anything relevant for this that we could, that we could round around these standards, or maybe something we could look into over the next week. Does that even make sense?
Looking at Solicitor Willock, who has looked at every
Is there, is there a standard around storage of goods within public housing or I have to imagine there's something that exists out there that I just, that we haven't thought ever seen.
We haven't seen one. We certainly can take a look at that.
Counsel Scott.
Thank you, Chair. Going off of that, is there currently a, does the city have a draft of this storage policy? Are we able to see that?
I can distribute that through email if that's okay.
The solicitor will email the council before the next council meeting. You waving or you want to speak? Okay, Counsel Merkel.
Thank you, Chair Cohen, and not being a member of the committee, and I know it's been a long meeting and so I'll be brief. But I did want to take a second to just say, first of all, I appreciate the changes in discussion tonight that you know that we've made on this. And I want to thank everyone who gave public comment and and sent emails. What I've appreciated is the concerns expressed for however this lands, you know, for our unhoused folks, you know, the affordable housing and the healthcare and services crisis that got us here has been many, many years in the making, you know, zoning, redlining and other barriers. A system that keeps people in poverty is, as Jason said, poor policies. It's a long list and here we are. And the realities, the reality is the solutions are going to take a very long time. And wherever this lands, I hope that that having this in front of us and the conversations we've had will, and I think they already have, you know, prompted a real sense of urgency. You know, in creating affordable and low threshold and transitional housing and support for our community health center in Life Bridge and Harbor Light expansions. You know, there are actions we can take and I'm, you know, hoping we all remember, you know, where we are right now and that we can act with that sense of urgency and, you know, big thank you to our city departments and the Community Impact Unit in Life Bridge and the organizations and volunteers they partner with to assist people compassionately. And we need to keep working to provide them with the resources they need to continue that work. So I'm hoping that that is a positive that comes out of here is a sense of urgency. Thank you.
Counsel Scott.
Thank you, Chair Cohen. I'd like to echo everything that my fellow counselor just said. This is a tough one. I'm going back to an earlier conversation of items that Counselor Davis brought up. I did not see your suggested edits, obviously. So I'm curious if there's a way if there was proposed language that you had to include those items that from what I understood, you were saying, like no time limits on the sense of stay and safe place to stay. I'm looking at the definition of what our emergency shelter space shall be. And it does say that accommodations under ADA Act, which I'm assuming is also state shelter law. So if currently a state shelter law says that there's no time limit on beds, should we include that as well? So kicking off of if mass law does change, we are covered with it under our ordinance. Because what if mass law changes about the ADA Act? We have no idea where this country is going. So I appreciate that that is included in our ordinance, but what are the other pieces that we might want to continue? So I'm wondering if there was any proposed language from you about adding that in? And if there's any, I guess, appetite from the council for discussing that.
There is a lot of proposed language counselors have not been able to see. We only have you know, the ones that were adopted here or used here in red lines. So just a question about process. I mean, I think there are many things that people, you know, that's a good example, people might like to see before making decisions or, you know, recommendations to the council. So just, just wondering kind of what that would look like. And I know open meeting law, I can't, you know, send the suggestions to everyone's email.
We, we did send Kyle's letter to the committee members. And now I'm just addressing you because you and I spoke multiple times about this. That there were things, there was language that we felt would be, you know, some of it contrary to having an ordinance like this shelter. The transition center would have to be a permanent shelter. There were things that the intent was not to to obscure what you were saying. It was just, you know, we wanted to balance it and make sure that, and we did use a lot of the stuff, as you know. I just want to go back to Counsel Scott, like did you have a specific recommendation that you wanted to say?
I would like to, through you, Mr. Chair, ask Counselor Davis what his suggested language was around the time limitations. To answer your question, Chair, I don't have suggested language, but I can come up with some.
So what I had written that Counselor Cohen is saying would be hard to implement because it, you know, suggests permanence. What I wrote was reasonable stay means a shelter whose policies ensure that a shelter or bed is guaranteed to a person. or bed is guaranteed to a person, offered placement for a duration of time which is permanent or long term, that they shall be offered and may opt to receive identified services that may address their housing, employment, academic, health, legal or other identified needs. And that placement is not on the basis of a lottery first come service or time limited without the ability to extend. As I suggested earlier, I would also love to see some length of time that seems reasonable to the body or to experts listed there.
I'm just going to say this. When the solicitors and I discussed this, one of the things that came up, has already come up in this meeting, that yes, right now we have a transition center that we have more influence on. We don't, if it's somewhere else. And one of the key components of this ordinance is that if we cannot provide the option, we cannot move people from where they're camping. And that was, raising this right, that was the rationale that we used to leave that out because we thought it was, you know. I'm going to say this, the thing that drives me about this ordinance and what I have found to be positive is with this ordinance being presented to us and acting, we do have a transition shelter that we are not mandating people to use and as Jason said, people are using. And it's my belief that the most important thing is to be able to provide an option to people to have a safe space and that we are not forcing people into that space. And that this ordinance will dictate that we are, as a city, along with agencies like Life Bridge, always looking for more transition centers because we can't always count on what we have today. So I'm going to defer briefly to the solicitors because that's the way I thought our conversation.
Right, I think the concern that was raised in that definition was the permanency of it. So maybe Jason can speak to that with respect to the permanency.
I see it, I understand the intent, right? You don't want to move folks from one place to a maybe temporary location that then dissolves or disappears. Quite honestly, we'll never be able to enforce policy on other shelter providers. We have a scope of service, I think we have some control over the transition center here in Salem, which I've stated does not have a length of stay requirement. And one of my fears is, we are definitely hyper focused on shelter. I know that's probably the first step in this. But folks might have other options outside of shelter. And I don't know how you can force permanency in those situations. What if people are reunited with their family? Is there a time limit? People are housed, how long do they have to house? So for me, it's a slippery slope, but I understand the intent. And as far as outside of the 15 mile location, there's not going to be, I don't know going through all this effort is going to make much of a difference, as opposed to maybe focusing on controlling the transition center and the length of stay there, which we've said is infinite as long as it exists.
I'd like to think that there is a way to accomplish this intent and it might take time and it might take a lot of specificity in a language, but I think that it's really important. I think that even language like to the best of our ability, I think goes a long way. I think language like communicating with the shelters to the best of our ability to see what their capacity is and what's the average length that someone's been staying there, just some language that implies that we're going to do our due diligence to avoid that potential scenario as best as possible.
Counsel Merk.
Thank you, Chair Cohen. I also appreciated Jason's perspective there with that, that I do understand the intent. But I think putting something specific would be really hard to track, to keep, like you said, we would have no say in areas outside of Salem on what they do. Things can change, there could be a problem with a shelter, something could happen there. I think it would, I think it would be very murky to try to sort out and like what was said, what if somebody left a shelter for three days? Where do we say that they were just away for a little while and it should still be 30 days? I just think that would be really murky to try to keep track of, for lack of a better way to express that. But I do kind of like the point of making language for the commitment. If the city solicitor has a suggestion or any of the committee has a suggestion for
I'm going to make a.
Language.
An opinion. And that's, I really don't like ordinances that say we're going to really, really, really try hard. This is really connected to this idea that we're lucky to have people in place in departments and agencies and like our police department, Life Bridge or the mayor, whatever, that we feel are sympathetic to unhoused people and that maybe we won't in the future. And so it's really hard to define both of those things. I'm going to make an offer to you, Counselor Davis, that maybe on this specific thing, you and I could, as we've done on other things, try to figure out something else that could be a potential addendum at some point in the future. Because I agree with Counselor Merkel. I told you I work for a homeless shelter and our concern was always not the shelter itself, but where people were going and whether we could track them and are they safe in their new place? And I think that's something what Jason was talking to, just making an offer to you because I don't think wishful language is as good as something specific. If we can get to a better place, would that be something you'd be agreeable to? Yeah? Counselor Mus.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah. I just want to make it also very clear that I am never opposed to going back and strengthening language that needs to be changed when we notice that there is an issue. And I know we are going to hear when issues happen, when things happen that were not thought of. And so I'm confident that we can go back and close those holes that may exist and probably will exist. I mean, you know, you know, we've changed some things lately in ordinances to go back and fix loopholes. I think that this is important right now because it's just not safe where that campsite is. The people living there are not safe. They are not safe, it is not healthy. We need to start building better approaches to this that build relationships between the communities involved. Every single community around us has a homeless issue, every single one of them. They may not have a visible campsite like we do, but they have homeless people living in their community, in their woods, along train tracks, they have them, they just are not talking about them and they're ignoring them right now. It's all going to start bubbling up in every single community and we need to work together to bring solutions, mental health solutions, physical health solutions, housing, we need housing, we need housing, we need housing at every single level, but we need housing. And so somebody mentioned Representative Moulton's comments. I agree, that was the most tone deaf set of statements that I have heard in an awfully long time. And for him to say that this is not a federal issue is ignoring the fact that they have a responsibility at the national level to help communities like Salem. We cannot solve this on our own, we just can't. And so I am angry with his words, I am angry with what was behind his sentiment. He needs to be here working with us, helping us to solve this, and he's not. And he does not see it as his job. And that's very frustrating. It's very frustrating for this body to be here talking about this homeless situation and we are all, we all have a lot of empathy for everyone in this situation because any one of us could end up homeless, any one of us. We are all teetering on the brink with healthcare, with every other economic condition in this country. And, okay. So I think I am happy everyone's here, I'm happy everyone got to say what they want to say. We need to try something and we need to give this ordinance a shot. And so with that, I would like to refer this to the full council as amended with a positive recommendation for first passage.
The discussion was second. Second.
Counsel Murcello has moved to refer this to the council with the voted on amendments, the approved amendments, to the council with a positive recommendation, seconded by Counsel Prozinski. Any discussion? Counsel Prozinski.
Thank you. I think Counselor Merkel used the right word earlier when she said urgency. We were too late for Andrew Carbone. Let's not be late for the rest of the people down there. That's it. Those living conditions are inhumane. And I don't know how many of you who've been down there, I know some of the counselors have taken the opportunity to be escorted by the police down there. If any of you who haven't been down there, take a look at those living conditions and see, not only if you would let your family or your animal live there, inhumane is the definition. Dangerous exposure. I can go on with a bunch of adjectives, but Counsel Merkel said it right. It's urgent that we pass it now and for the reasons that Counselor Murcello said, we have to do something to help our fellow neighbor. Thank you.
I'm going to make a statement about this. And this is not to criticize the words you say because I agree with what you said and the intent. And if it's okay, Skylar, I want to repeat something that you and I spoke about this morning. It's always weird when people say things like, we can all be homeless. Because even though we can, we don't really know what it's like to be unhoused unless we are. And even people who work with unhoused people or doing services don't necessarily know what it's like. It's, in my mind, like I was saying to someone, camping to me is like staying in a hotel near a mountain. And even when I worked, and I said this story the last time we met, when I worked with homeless kids and I met this child of eight years old who was deserted and I thought I could buy him sneakers or something, and I realized that I couldn't do anything to get this person into a secure place mentally. I don't know what happened to this person. I'm hoping that this person is, is living a productive life that they want to, but I cannot personally imagine what it's like to be unhoused, just like I cannot imagine what it's like to live as a trans person of color, always to be in fear. And we can all in this room say that we advocate for certain things, but we can't represent things necessarily unless we've experienced it. And it's, I brought up Andy Carbone, not because that's an example of unhoused people, it's just because we don't always see people or who they are and what they've been through. And that person passed away and I don't know how many people here knew this person. I know some of the CIU members do and maybe some of the people which are the action and other people may know in Life Bridge, this person, but we don't really know. And I'm sad that we don't really know what it's like to be homeless. So I'm just saying that I support this for the reasons I said before, but I'm really in a place where I am always cognizant that people who are the most marginalized in our community, we really don't understand personally what they experience. And that's all our fault. That's because we have our own lives and we live it and we're all dealing with our own struggles. So I'm going to vote to support this to go to the council and I do think it's important for a couple of things. I think it's very important that if a ward counselor votes for this ordinance, that they should be comfortable with a transition center in their ward. I think that's really important. And I think that what Counsel Murcello said to you, Counselor Davis, I think is really important. It's not just the people in the room and the people in the public that need to hold us accountable, we do as well. Find a good, better place, better language. We have a great Solicitor's Office that will help us, we will come back and do something better and I'm counting on you to help. So I do support. Any other? Counsel President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't want to repeat anything that anyone else has said here, but do appreciate the words of all three of my at-large colleagues, with three Counselors and the rest of this group here. For a long time, I think, all across this country, we've seen the Supreme Court hearing that's happening, communities have pointed fingers at different issues. We've pointed at Martin B. Boise or at the Faircloth Amendment or about Ronald Reagan. There's a lot of places we can point our fingers. What this ordinance does is it points it back at us and it removes a lot of those excuses that I think we have had as a community to say, well, we can't really do much, our hands are tied here. It puts the onus on us to create shelter space and to create services and to support our shelters. So I think municipal policy is not about fixing every single problem that exists or fixing an entire problem or even a big piece of a problem. Municipal policy is often about dealing with the short-term issues that are in front of our face right now as we grapple with the structural issues that we all know need to change. So I appreciate everyone's words tonight here today and I'll also be supporting this when it comes before the full council.
Okay. Counsel Davis?
Thank you, Chair. Just wanted to say that whether you agree with this or not, whether you end up voting for this or not, I think I appreciate the agreed sentiment in the room here that this is not addressing structural issues and that this is not the only tool in the toolbox. And I genuinely hope that there will be a lot of appetite after this to use a lot of those tools and actually get at those structural barriers. Because if we don't, this is going to keep happening and getting worse and we will need more and more of this if this is the only thing that we agree is the solution. So I hope that there is an appetite to really accomplish that together.
Okay, so on Counsel Murc... Counsel Murcello's motion to refer to the city council with the approved amendments with a positive recommendation, all in favor. It passes four to nothing or votes four, zero against. And I will entertain one more motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Counsel Prozinski moves that we adjourn, all in favor. For everyone.